So, thank you again, everyone, for July 1st reorganization and business meeting for the Cohoes City School District for 2020. And I'll call the meeting to order at 6:15. Apologies, we had an executive session that came up, so we're a little bit behind today. If we could, Sylvie, if you pull up, I know you just had it there, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all justice. At this time, I'll turn it over to Joanna for our oath sub-office.
Mrs. Giller? Mr. Pascal excused.
Oh, I'm sorry, not oath office, right, or do we need to do that first before we do attendance? I'm sorry.
No, we usually do a roll call first, if that's okay.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just had it backwards.
And Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Deion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly? Do we know where Peter is?
I saw him in here.
I'm here.
Ah, perfect.
Hi, Peter. And Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Thank you.
I believe now, Joanna, do you want to, do you have the oath sub-office to lead E and Margaret through them?
I sure do.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, Margaret, if you'll just repeat after me, I, Margaret Giller, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of member of the Board of Education
Of member of the Board of Education
For the 2021 school year
For the 2021 school year
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And Peter, it's I, Peter Annaly, do solemnly swear
I, Peter Annaly, do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of the member of the Board of Education
Of the member of the Board of Education
For the 2021 school year
For the 2021 school year
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
And congrats again to Margaret and Pete, welcome back, Margaret, and we're excited to have you. Pete? At this time, we'll open the floors for President of the Board for the 2021 school year.
This is Margaret, I'd like to nominate Matt Nolan for president.
This is Sue, I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Do we need to do a roll call to go into nominations?
Yep.
Okay.
So, it's Mrs. Giller? So, at this point, we just say that Matt Nolan be elected President of the Board of Education for the 2021 school year, and then we do a roll call.
Okay, perfect.
So, we'll do Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal, oh, excuse me, he's excused, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and with that, the oath of office for President Joanna.
Okay. I, Matthew Nolan, do solemnly swear
I, Matthew Nolan, do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of President of the Board of Education
Of President of the Board of Education
For the 2021 school year
For the 2021 school year
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability. And at this point, I'll need a motion to open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I'll make the motion for Margaret Giller, for Vice President.
I'll second.
Okay, and then with that, the motion is that Margaret Giller will be elected Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2021 school year. Can we get a roll call for that, Joanna?
Sure, Mrs. Giller?
Yeah?
Mr. Pascal? Oh, I keep doing that. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Mrs., Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
And I'll turn it over to Joanna for the oath of office.
I, Margaret Giller, do solemnly swear
I, Margaret Giller, do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Vice President of the Board of Education
Vice President of the Board of Education
For the 2021 school year
For the 2021 school year
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Margaret, for serving again this year.
Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you. Congratulations both to you.
And with that, reorganization is a fair few of these, but I'll need a motion that the Board of Education adopt, appoint Joanna Maloney to the position of District Clerk for the 2021 school year.
I'll make a motion.
I think I heard a second, but if not, a second.
Second, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'll read my oath. I, Joanna Maloney, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2021 school year, to the best of my ability. We'll just do one more roll call. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joanna. At this point, I'll need a motion that the Board adopts, appoint Peggy O'Shea to the position of Deputy District Clerk for the 2021 school year, no additional compensation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Peggy, this is for your oath. I, Peggy O'Shea
I, Peggy O'Shea
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
And I will faithfully discharge
Deputy District Clerk of the Board of Education
Deputy District Clerk of the Board
For the 2021 school year
For the 2021 school year
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Thanks, Peg. And just one last roll call. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, at this point, we can move to any discussion of anything on the reorganization agenda. Specifically, I think first, we can talk about committee appointments. We have the Audit Committee, the Budget Committee, District Safety, Policy, Technology, and Wellness. As far as audit, last year, we had myself, Margaret, and Sue on the committee. Budget, we had myself and Rick. District Safety, it was Mark, Margaret, and Helen. Policy, it was Margaret, Rick, and Nadia. Technology was myself and Helen. And Wellness, it was Mark, Helen, and Sue. So, that's where we stood last year. Does anyone have any particular ones that they would like to join this year, anything they'd like to change?
So, Matt, Nadia was part of the Budget Committee last year.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay, just sorry. Oh, I didn't have her, that's my fault.
So, there's, you know, we can swap anything around. I don't know if Pete, you're interested in any particular committees, that would be probably a good place to start.
I'm happy to take the help if that helps anybody.
The Wellness, wasn't Helen and the Wellness?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to take over that, it makes it easy for the names.
Yeah. She was also on the District Safety Committee.
I'm happy to take that also.
Okay.
All right, then I think everyone else's committees can remain the same for next year, if no one has anything that they would like to change at the moment.
I think Helen was on Technology, that might not be the best one to put me on, if I'm going to be honest.
I'd be happy to be on that committee.
Okay, perfect. Is there any other discussion about any items on the reorganization agenda? And we didn't receive any, the only public comment that I got, which I did get a couple of emails a moment ago, was I got an email from Deanna Kelly on behalf of the Coes Principals Association, they'd like to welcome Pete Annaly to the Board of Education, and thank you for volunteering, and they look forward to working with you. Thank you, Deanna, for sharing that. And then, from Scott Schellum, on behalf of the Coes Teachers Association, we would like to welcome Mr. Annaly to the Board of Education and look forward to working with him and the rest of the board.
Thank you very much.
So, I just have a question on the reorg agenda, under B number five, is that, Stacy, I don't know if you can answer, you might be able to answer this, is that the policy that we were talking about, working on at the next Policy Committee meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay. It was in regard to making transfers between appropriations?
For, within functional unit appropriation for teacher salaries and ordinary contingent expenses. I don't believe so. Stacy, are you on?
I can't hear you, Stacy.
That is not a policy change, that is giving the Superintendent the authority to sign off on budget transfers, but no, the policy, that's not the same as the policy, like we talked about. On my, on my business office update, I did plan on talking about the change to the budget transfer process, and the Board will see the new policy very shortly, but no, that is just that Jennifer is the authority to sign off on budget transfers, that's what that line item is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, with that, then, I'll move on to a motion for tonight's agenda. So, for tonight's agenda, the motion will be on 6A, 1 through 22, B, 1 through 19, C, 1 through 11, and 7A. We had discussed, as the Board was brought up, that we'd be tabling 6A for the timing. So, I can use a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
With that, I believe we can adjourn our reorganization meeting and move into our regular business meeting at 6:34. So, to do that, I'll need a motion.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. With that, I'll call the regular business meeting, so order at 6:35, and I will turn it over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, Matt. President Matt, congratulations again. And welcome, Board of Education members, welcome Peter Annaly, and welcome to our participants tonight. So, you can see our smiling high school seniors, grad, almost completely graduates at their recent parade, so that was a great event. So, kudos and shout out to our high school graduating seniors. Next slide, please. Again, questions for public comment can be emailed to boecomment@cohoes.org. Thank you. So, before we get started with the District Safety Plan, I did want to update the Board. Jim Stapleton and I are Director of Facilities, met with CSR, the district's architects.
Just one thing, I don't, I don't know if it's full screen and if people can read it or not. Sylvie, do you have to share it, or present mode or something like that?
It is.
Okay, for some reason, on my screen, it's not full screen. I just wanted to make sure that folks will be able to see the slides, so, continue.
Okay, so, so we met with CSR, and we discussed, first of all, their coming and finishing and completing their building walkthroughs, so that will be Monday. They are working on the building condition survey for the school district. They would like to come to an upcoming board meeting, and I, tentatively, if this is good with the Board, has, I've scheduled September 23rd to have them come. They would like to share the results of their, the building condition survey and what the infrastructure priorities are, because these items will inform Phase 1 of our capital project, which would, is solely going to be focused on infrastructure updates and upgrades. So, so they would like to come, and if you're good with that, I'd like to, to schedule that. Okay, so, so the plan is still to go out to voters in May with a small project that will be devoted totally to infrastructure upgrades, so I'll keep you posted on that one. So, tonight is our hearing for our District Safety Plan. So, just some plan requirements, just to inform the public and the Board. So, the plan must be reviewed annually and updated as next month adopted by the Board by September 1. Again, as I just said, tonight is our public board meeting, and it serves to begin the public comment period prior to board adoption on August 12. The draft plan has been posted to our district website, and if anyone has comments, please use the boecomment@cohoes.org, and we would be happy to answer your questions. So, following the adoption by the Board on August 12, the plan must be posted to the website within 30 days, and it's already on our website, but again, the final adoption. Additionally, the Board will review the building safety plans on August 12 in executive session, as these plans are confidential, and we'll have to work out what that looks like, how to, how to present them to you, for approval at the August 26 meeting. So, in addition to these requirements, I almost, I also must go to the business portal for State Ed and link our plan to the district website. I have to put in critical dates and certification that all district staff has received annual training in emergency response, school violence prevention, and mental health. So, we can go to the next slide, the Cohoes Plan highlights. Again, the, the purpose of the District Safety Plan is to really provide the framework, okay, so that we have consistency among all of our buildings, and the framework which we establish, the procedures, protocols, that all informs our building plan. So, that's why the District Safety Plan is, is important. Our building plans are confidential, our building principals are completing them right now, and we will be sharing those with you. So, the planning guidelines include identifying the district teams. So, at our July 29 board meeting, you will be approving the district safety team. Our building level teams are approved and appointed by just the building principal, not just, but, so, so that's important. Emergency response planning is part of the plan, and again, our, our shell terminology, shelter in place, hold in place, evacuation, lockout, lockdown, what are the procedures for that are all included in our building plans. The framework is included for how we respond to threats and acts of violence, procedures for communicating an emergency, who should be notified, obviously, we call 911, the buildings call the Superintendent's Office right away, and we also, obviously, work with law enforcement if, if that is needed. Prevention and intervention strategies, that's all part of the, the district plan, and it's all about how do we support our students, how do we promote positive behavior, and support mental health. And lastly, it's about recovery. So, what follow-up procedures do we have in place after an emergency, including communications, I know that's something that we've talked about at the board level, and mental health support. Next slide, please. So, if you have any comments, please, the plan's on our website, and please let us know. Next slide. So, this year, in our building safety plans, there will be a COVID plan, and, and we are working, obviously, on COVID with our reopening committee, and we will have that as part of the emergency response plans for the buildings as well. Next slide, please. So, you, you may have heard that a new executive order, beginning June 25th through July 26, staff who have voluntarily traveled to states with high COVID rates will need to quarantine upon return. Employers may charge those employees with sick time upon return through the quarantine. So, I have notified all of our 12-month staff, or any staff who will be working over the summer, that this executive order is now in place. And this one is very interesting. So, currently, there is an executive order, as everybody is aware of, that authorizes and requires remote public meetings, so that's tonight. So, this executive order expires July 6. So, we need to pay careful attention to this, because if it is not extended, then our July 29 meeting will be... Okay, so we have some options for that. So, we have to keep capacity fewer than 50 people, 50% room capacity. So, we could move meetings to a larger venue, which we would be able to socially distance, where we could have better ventilation. My idea was, well, the gym at the high school is air-conditioned, opening two doors there, I think the ventilation is very good there. We can livestream the meeting, I think we're all, you know, excited about all of our participation. So, if, if we would like to livestream, then we definitely could reduce the number of people who could be, would be in attendance. We would need to purchase some equipment, I've already talked to Sylvie, and he said we can absolutely do that. Some members may not feel comfortable, some board members may not feel comfortable coming to an in-person meeting, and we would also be able to allow you to continue virtual meetings through WebEx, but you, we would have to also advertise your residence. So, so that's the only caveat there. So, so those are some of our choices. I don't know if we want to talk about this now, or just wait until July 6 comes and goes.
Is it, July 6 is the current expiration, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think it, the, I think that's only, you know, a few days away, so if, I think we can wait until that time and see if it, you know, expires, or whether they extend out again before really diving into plans, because that'll still give us, you know, 20 days to make sure we have a solid plan in place.
Well, great, so I'll keep everyone posted, and just definitely wanted to let everybody know about that to be on the lookout. So, so great, next one, please.
Jennifer, can I just ask some questions?
Jennifer, can I just ask some questions on that?
Sure.
This is Margaret. Okay, I'm just wondering what type of equipment are we going to need to purchase that we don't already have on hand? And I'm curious to know, you know, it's going to be something that weighs, you know, where we weigh. Like how much is this WebEx costing us to use? So, you know, we can kind of weigh our options of, you know, the equipment that needs to be purchased versus the WebEx meetings, you know, all those kinds of things. Because I don't know that we're aware of the costs involved.
Yeah, so we do have Sylvie on the line. I know that we do have a number of licenses through BOSI's for WebEx. So Sylvie, could you just, I'm not sure exactly how much that is off the top of my head.
The licensing that we currently hold for WebEx is included as part of our voice-over-IP subscription, our phone service that we subscribe to BOSI.
So it's... So Sylvie, what about additional equipment if we do decide to livestream in a larger venue being socially distanced?
It would just be a beefier webcam, some sort of a higher-grade webcam than your standard desktop webcam. Because obviously it'd be showing at a much wider angle, potentially at a farther distance. Because, you know, you need to capture everybody that's sitting at the board table. But that's it.
And microphones?
Microphones potentially. It would be all part of that same system.
And any idea roughly ballpark how much that might cost?
I would say no more than a couple of hundred dollars, depending on what we opted for. I can certainly price up a couple of different options and we could choose the best one that works for us.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, very good. So I'll keep you posted. So again, schools continue to be closed except for the extended school year, which is important for the governor. And we have our program beginning virtually on Monday. I know that Karen Renesi and Erin Hill have been met this morning virtually with all of the ESY staff. Staff, they were required to take a COVID-related training. So everyone has done that. So we're grateful. We will be having students, we will be taking temperatures when students do come on campus, beginning the virtual days, which will start Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, our virtual days. I mean, our in-person days, Monday, Friday. Ability of meals. So we talked about food service already. And the next, yes? Your question? Can you go back?
So the other part is from the New York State High School Athletic Association. So we were under the understanding previously that if we moved to Phase Four, again, today's Phase Four in Albany County, that we would be able to begin... I hear some noise. So if everyone can mute. So we were under the expectation that we would be able to begin summer training with our athletes once Phase Four began. But the governor said no, that he has the authority to authorize on-campus sports activity and he is not going to be doing that at this time and he has no timeline for doing so. So at this point, we have no guidance on athletics. Nothing is happening right now until we wait and see what the governor is, what his intention is. Next slide.
And State Ed is going to be presenting their reopening guidance to the Board of Regents on July 13. So we're all interested in hearing what they have to say because we are all anxious to receive guidance. Our plan to reopen schools, so our committee met June 18. We have subcommittees that are meeting now and our next committee will meet again July 8. As I said, still no guidance from the governor or State Ed. So things are changing every day. Every day we're getting new guidance, new information. So the newest guidance is that temperature checks and symptom screening may be done at home. So that is something we're looking into. We are looking into self-attestations for staff and for, from families, something we're looking at right now and how to make that happen. And the Massachusetts plan is allowing for three-foot distancing as long as masks are being worn. And that's something we are considering to be more flexible as a way to get 100% of our students in at the secondary level. But we are confident that we're able to get all of our elementary students in district-wide, maintaining a six-foot distance and not requiring students to wear masks in the classroom. So that's where we are now and we will continue to work with our subcommittees and update the larger committee. You may, you may turn the slide.
Hi, this is Peggy O'Shea. I just wanted to give you a few updates. Our District Comprehensive Improvement Plan Committee is holding its first meeting virtually tomorrow. It'll be the first of two or three meetings. And it's a committee of administrators, teachers, parents, students, Rick Jackson. And we do not have all the data to be able to determine if we met the final goals. We did not administer Regents tests, map testing, et cetera. But we do have interim goals and interim data and we'll be, we'll be looking at that. We'll be looking at priorities. It does ask about our plan for closing instructional gaps due to the COVID closure. We do have the Instructional Reopening Committee the following week. So between DSEP and Instructional Reopening, we'll be able to talk about that. We'll have the plan to you the week prior to the August 12 BOE meeting and be asking that that plan be approved at August 12. And then we'll send it to the state to meet our deadline of August 14. The other virtual secondary summer programming that also starts on Monday. You'll be seeing recommendations though at the next board meeting. So I did want to give you an update on what would be running. So math, social studies, Apex, and special education teacher. So four, five teachers will be appointed. The social studies teachers will be splitting the time. And the breakdown, our 13 students for social studies, eight students for Apex and eight students for math. We will still be accepting, we made, the secretaries and Tom made phone calls, reached out. They're still trying to reach out to additional students to see if these, if these numbers grows, number grow and we'll update you. It's a 20-hour program, one hour a week and that meets the regulations for summer makeup program. That's it for me. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. I can't hear you safe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. This is Stacy Mackey. So just a brief financial update. We did receive a Moody's report, a rating report. No real surprises on the report. We did stay at our A1 rating. Last rating was in 2017 and we had an A1 underlying rating, which is a solid credit position. The rate factors were economy and tax base, which we remained stable. Debt and pension liabilities, again, where we have remained stable. And cash position and fund balance, we did, as you already know, experience a weakened position in that area. OSC guidance for the CARES Act. So OSC did issue guidance, I think it was just last week actually, for the CARES Act. So you may recall when we received our final State Ed runs, we had a pandemic adjustment. So the CARES Act hopefully will help alleviate that. I think it was 596,000 for us here in Cohoes. The process is going to be that we're going to account for that through the general fund. We will have to apply for the funds. And hopefully, we're going to see some more guidance on that shortly, in the next week or two. But again, we will have to go through an application process. We will create separate unique account codes. The last four digits will likely be CARE and will account for it in the general fund. So the budget transfer process, so this is what Mrs. Giller was talking about earlier. Last month, we had met with the policy committee. And actually, this had come up at the conclusion of the budget process. And I was asked to come up with a stronger process. So I did take a look at several of our neighboring districts' policies. And we are going to tighten up the existing policy. It is policy 6150. So you'll see that the next time we meet a revised policy. So any amount may be transferred within the same function. So that's the first four digits of an account code. So an example would be buildings and grounds. And objects codes, that's the next three digits of the account code. An example would be salary. So any amount, as long as it's within buildings and grounds and it's a salary. So if it's between a cleaner and a custodian or a cleaner and a maintenance mechanic, those are some examples, would be allowable without board approval. And then historically, our threshold has been $100,000. And looking at several of our neighboring districts, their threshold is $10,000. So that is the recommendation. So any amount under $10,000, we would give notice to the board, but it wouldn't require separate approval. Any amount above $10,000 would require board approval. And then we also talk about the actual budget form and making it a fillable PDF for the components, excluding signatures, obviously. Making sure that the budget transfer is rejected, if not all aspects are completely filled out. So for example, the account number and then the description. And I think description is really an area that sometimes is left blank. So we'll make sure that's being completed. And then also the purpose. The purpose needs to make sense, not just to the person that's filling out the form, but for everybody. So it's easily understandable. So I've already met with our district treasurer and I've met with our accounts payable clerk. They're aware of the changes and we plan on implementing that effective, basically immediately. For annual audits, we have Michael Wolf, who conducts the risk assessments. He was behind. So I actually just did receive the 2019 report. So you'll receive that in the weekly update. And we'll take action at the audit committee meeting in the fall. So there will actually be two risk assessment reports. Again, you'll receive one in the weekly update. I don't have the current year just yet. The year-end financials, again, that's Marvin and Company. We do have the week of August 17 booked for the financial audit. We're likely going to have Title I as the review area again. And the audit committee meeting was tentatively scheduled for September 29 from 5:00 to 7:00. So now that we know who the audit committee members are, I can go ahead and send you out a meeting request. So Matt, Sue, and Margaret, I'll send that out to you this week or next. And then the facilities update, we do have the middle school project that's underway. They have already started construction. They've already started removing areas of the roof. They've put tarps down. We have had rain this week. We haven't experienced any leaks, thank goodness. They're moving along nicely. They are on time. And we do expect them to complete work in early August. So that's wonderful. The Harmony Hill boilers, you know, you took action last time we met. TMI was the lowest responsible bidder. So they have ordered the boiler, waiting for that to come in. So we expect work probably to begin with the piping and demolition in August for that item. I did also want to say that the next time we meet in July, I'll give you an update of our long-range financial plan based off of how we performed in the current school year. So you have an idea of where we ended up. All right, do you have any questions for me?
Stacy, this is Margaret. I just had a question on the application. Is this something, like, do we have a lot of information on this? What is involved in the application? Are we limited on the funds that we request just based on, you know, the pandemic adjustment? Or how does that all work?
So we do not have a lot of information on this. I'll share the guidance that was provided through OSC for the weekly update. It's very minimal. They expect the application process for schools to be through the SAMs, through the portal. And honestly, it's the government is the one that receives the monies and then the schools are applying through the SAMs portal. For, we don't expect it to be anything additional to the pandemic adjustment. So we don't expect any additional funds to be available. That was asked on the BOSI's call today and they said no, they don't think so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Stacy, I have a question. Can you, or will the capital project and associated debt be included in the long-term projections? I think there was a little bit of change in the description that Jennifer just talked about a few slides ago about the, how comprehensive the project is going to be now. Is that going to impact?
So we're working, that won't be part of the long-range plan. The five-year long-range plan, the capital piece isn't included in that, but we can give an update. We've asked Rick Timms to come up with something for us so we could provide that at the same meeting.
Thanks. I'd like to make sure, like, look ahead and make sure we're not headed toward a negative levy amount.
Right. So next, the next budget season, not next year, but the next budget season, we have a pilot, a large pilot coming off the books. So that will be discussed with the long-range plan. That's Brookfield. So we actually need to discuss that with the city as well to see if there's any changes, any updates. Because that is over $900,000 in pilot revenue. So that is something that will be included in the long-range plan, separate from the capital piece. Okay?
Thank you, Stacy.
Jennifer, this is Margaret. Can I just circle back and ask a question on the safety plan? I was just wondering, are we still utilizing BOSI's for that service? And are we providing online trainings to our staff? Is that still something that we're doing or are they planning on an in-person training for those things? And are we continuing to look at our staff throughout the year as they're coming in, offering them those trainings as well?
So, so great questions. We're very happy so far with our BOSI safety specialist, Lynette Holman. She's on our district reopening committee. And she's meticulously gone through and helped us with our district-wide safety plan, our building plans. The training that the ESY staff and our summer staff and our 12-month staff for COVID-related safety is all being provided by BOSI's. It's actually a webinar that's linked to Schoology. So everyone has to log on to Schoology. Those who aren't familiar with that, we've got Katrina helping them. So that's going very, very well. It's a 30-minute training video. They have to take a quiz after. They have to take a quiz after, and that, the staff who take it, it populates a spreadsheet for me. So, we're keeping track of that. I know that in the past, you know, we've missed a few of our new hires who have started after the school year. So, Lynette is helping us to definitely strengthen our practices and really make sure that we get everybody on board, trained.
And would that also include, you know, potential substitutes that are coming in, things like that, just so that they know our emergency procedures? I just don't know what type of training we have for those kind of things. And, you know, we had talked about it before, and I just was wondering if that was included in?
Yeah. So, again, great point, because most of our safety and emergency response and SAVE training has been in-person. We have had videos in the past through, like Needham. So, now BOSI's has those videos, and we haven't talked yet about what that is going to look like. But I know that there is an option for online only. So, that might be appropriate this year.
Could you also ask if you are going to research that and see if that is an option? Because I honestly think that might be the way that we need to go, what the charges are for us to participate in that service?
For the total service?
For the online training? Like, if we were to add that in to, I mean, I would assume they would deploy that out through, like, MyLearning or something like that in order to craft?
I think it's included. Well, right now, it's included. I can, we can talk to Lynette to make sure everything's included, but the trainings that she shared with us so far through Schoology, and I did hear you say in terms of substitutes. So, that's the one area where if they're BOSI's employees and not our substitutes, they do get training, it might be, but it's not building specific emergency training. So, that is an area we can talk about with Lynette as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, or any other follow-up from Jennifer or anyone on the admin team? Okay. With that, then, I'll need a motion for the board to adopt tonight's consent agenda for our regular business meeting.
This is Sue, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
With that, any comments from board members at all on any topic?
This is Margaret. I just really have a comment and want to just take a minute to thank all of our administrative team for putting together some pretty fantastic graduation and end-of-year celebrations. You know, throughout all of this, we've been able to jump on virtually and watch all of these things happen. And I just, we've heard a lot of really great feedback, or at least I've heard a lot of really great feedback from the community, and just want to let you all know that we certainly appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into that.
I agree.
Yes, thank you. Peggy backing on that on a not-so-pleasant note for everyone. I received an email from State Ed about how, just a couple hours south of here in New York, there was a high school that had a graduation ceremony, and one individual had went to Florida, came back with COVID, and now there's 20 other individuals that had, through the graduation ceremony, where they weren't following the proper procedures. The school had laid out the proper procedures, but individuals were still hugging and not maintaining social distancing. And now, there's over 20 folks that have been infected with COVID. So, I'll just, you know, implore everyone in our community to try to, you know, do their best. The situation that we're in is not fun, it's not where we want to be. But the last thing we want to do is to celebrate folks and come a couple weeks later and have some severely ill folks that, you know, might not even make it. So, I'll just ask, you know, everyone that attends these ceremonies, please, please just try to follow the rules as much as, you know, they may not seem like they're fun or they're hampering your celebration, but there is a reason they're in place.
Can I just ask a question? This is Margaret. Do we, have we asked any of our parents and students to fill out a social contract? Something that's just saying, you know, I agree to follow all the rules, I will be in attendance, I haven't been sick, you know, all of these things? Something that we have in writing to have them follow some type of a parameter?
So, I know that they clearly articulated the expectation, but I'm not aware that they've done a social contract, but I'll talk to Laura about that. And who is our principal as of today? So, I will definitely follow up with her.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Board of Admin?
I was just asking a question about those social contracts. With the kids having graduated, is there even any penalty if they do lie on the contract? I mean, is that just a paper exercise for us? Or is that something that could actually be enforced?
So, obviously, it's just a paper. But when I read the story about Chappaqua, which is the school district down in Westchester that is being impacted right now in the community, it sounds like also the governor or people are recommending that, you know, law enforcement really help the school districts out with, again, maintaining the social distancing as reminders. Nothing punitive, but as reminders. So, you know, so, again, we all want to be safe. There's nothing we can do to force people not to social distance or to wear masks. I mean, but hopefully, law enforcement can help guide these people to do the right thing at these events.
I think a contract just gives us a vehicle to do that, to kind of say, well, this is what you agreed to. And, you know, the liability then is on them to say, you know, yes, I've signed all of these things, and I've agreed to participate in this ceremony by doing these things. You know, and then the governor comes out and says, okay, well, if you cause harm to people, not only do you have a fine for coming back and not self-quarantining, but then there's an additional fine on top of that. I just think that it might be good practice for us to just have something where people, you know, are reading through what the expectations are and say, yes, I agree to this. And I know that it's good to have the communication out, verbal communication or phone call, but I feel like it's different when you read something and have to put your name at the bottom.
Oh, I fully agree that there should be something, and that there should be a defined set of parameters. I was just wondering if there was any specific reason why, you know, people would be like, no, I didn't go to Florida when they did. I mean, I know that for each person that has COVID, like, the contact tracing usually impacts 20 to 25 further people. But I was just wondering if there was going to be anything in there, like, you know, if you're not socially distancing, like a two-strikes and you're out kind of thing? You know, would we be able to remove these people from the ceremony? If that, you know, that create an issue? Or, you know, something is in writing, maybe it's just a deterrent.
So, yeah, so a few things. So, Margaret's correct, there's a huge fine for the school district. It's $10,000 if we're found in violation. So, it's pretty hefty. So, I like the idea of some kind of contract. I'm wondering if we could somehow do maybe a Google form and have them submit and agree, some kind of record. We will have our school safety officers in attendance, and they, you know, are going to be, you know, going up to people and giving those reminders. And it could be if it's really not being followed that they may have to ask somebody to leave. Again, we hope we don't get there, but we need to make sure that we're following the executive orders here.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I would be happy to share with you the one that we have in Mechanic though.
I think that would be great. Then I can share it with Laura and give, you know, a starting point of how they, you know, were able to accommodate that. Thank you.
And I think even within this contract, it's, you know, not everyone may even know that if they've traveled to another state, they should be home. They may think they can attend the graduation ceremony, and that's perfectly fine if they're socially distant. So, and that is not the case. That's not the guidance that the governor has at the moment. So, I think reinforcing some of those would also be helpful. With that, if there's no other comment, our next meeting is July 29th, which will be either in-person or livestreamed, depending on whether the executive order gets extended or not. But we'll make sure to advertise accordingly to everyone in the public. And then, I believe that is it for this evening. So, if we could get a motion to adjourn at 7:16?
I'll make a summary. Everybody wants to adjourn.
Second then.
Okay, Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy most of your July.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.